I call the Tuesday, March 12, 2019, work session of the Portsmouth City Council to order. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Glover.
Here.
Mrs. Lucas-Burt.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Ms. Simmons.
Here.
Mayor Russ.
Here.
Dr. Patton.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. The first presentation, Mr. Andre Stewart, actuarial with John Hancock Retirement Plan Service of Boston, Massachusetts, will present information on the city's two closed retirement systems, namely Portsmouth Fire and Police and Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement Systems. His presentation will include an overview of the retirement systems, an actuarial overview, investment returns, and cost of living adjustments. The second presentation will be an Other Post-Employment Benefits, better known as OPAD. Other post-employment benefits are the benefits that employees receive at the start of retirement above their retirement pay. Tonight, Ms. Elizabeth Gooden, Director of Human Resources Management, will present the city's retirees' other post-employment benefits. Following this presentation, I will come back to you with recommendations for modifications to the city's other post-employment benefits to increase the longevity and sustainability of the city's closed retirement systems. In addition, Mrs. Gooden will present the table on the VRS multiplier as requested by City Council. Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Dr. Patton. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Thanks for having me in again. I don't think I need to preface this conversation with letting you know that, please stop and let me know of any questions as we go through the presentation. Thank you. I'm just going to start with a overview of the system and its basic provisions. The system started in the 1950s, but since have frozen participation. The supplemental system froze participation in 1984, Fire and Police in 1995. That means that employees subsequent to those dates do not become members of the system. So, as you might expect, the systems at this point are made up primarily of inactive participants. The benefits actually in the system are comprised, 95% of those benefits comprised of inactive benefits. So, a very small portion of the benefits and costs are attributable to people that are currently employed by the city. Benefits are paid upon, basically, upon retirement, disability, as well as death. In the Fire and Police system, members can retire with 20 years of service or when they have attained the age of 50, assuming they have at least five years to service. The benefit is called the final average pay benefit, meaning that it's based on their 36 months of highest compensation. We take an average of those 36 months and apply a service factor to it. For Fire and Police, each of the first 20 years of service are earned at a rate of 3%. Each of the next five years, they earn 2% of that final average compensation, and any years over 25, we attribute 1% of final average compensation. So, for a participant who works 30 years, the formula is meant to replace 75% of their In addition to this basic benefit, there's a supplemental benefit that's payable up until age 65 for those members who retire prior to age 65. It's a temporary benefit that expires once they reach the age of 65, and that's $200 per month.
Stewart, excuse me, do you know how many, Paul, in that category, how many are getting the $200 off my?
That's in our next presentation.
That's in our, okay.
Yes, Ms. Gooden.
Thank you.
Okay.
The total benefit is $450,000 for the current fiscal year from the Fire and Police system.
For just the $200 part?
Mm-hmm. For the $200 component, correct.
And what was the history of that?
We have all of that in the code, in her report.
Oh.
In Ms. Gooden's report.
Next one.
The supplemental system does not have retirement based on service alone, but it does have a similar retirement based on the age of 50 with five years of service. It's similarly structured in that the benefit's based on compensation. The multiplier, the service multiplier, is different. It's 2% per year for each year of service. So, it doesn't grade down, but it's a flat 2% for each year of service. So, similarly, after 30 years of service, it's meant to replace 60% of compensation. There was a post-65 benefit prior to 2013. In 2013, that benefit was eliminated. There is still the supplemental $200 benefit that's payable up until age 65 for the supplemental system that accounts for about $120,000 during the current fiscal year. Any questions?
Questions?
So, I'm just going to describe a couple key actuarial factors before we get into the heart of the presentation. The actuarial value of assets is the asset value that we use when determining contributions as opposed to market value. Market value is what you would, the number you would see if you were to open up your trust statement. The actuarial value, you can think of as a five-year average of the prior market values. It is intended to smooth out volatility in the investment market, thereby providing a more stable contribution year in, year out. You can also think of it as deferring gains and losses from the current years to future years, and I'll get into a little bit more detail around that in future slides.
And that's a five-year rolling average?
It is. The actuarial accrued liability, that's the liability of, for the pension plans, the present value of the benefits that have been earned to date. So, you can think of it as the single number, if you wanted to defees or release the liabilities and just release those liabilities. Instead of paying these benefits into the next 70, 80 years, you could pay those benefits off with a single premium today, and we'll talk about that number a little bit more. But that is the number that you're funding to, the liability that you need to cover in order to cover all the benefits to the participants now as well as into the future. The unfunded actuarial accrued liability is just the difference between the actuarial value of assets and the liability. It's the, you take the, it's the amount by which the actuarial accrued liability exceeds the actuarial value of assets. And the actuarially determined contribution, that's the amount that I calculate on an annual basis that is recommended that you contribute to the plan annually. And it's comprised of two components. One is the normal cost or the present value of benefits that are accruing during the year. Those benefits are being accrued by the active employees. There's only about 40, less than 40 active employees as of July 1, 2018, so it's a very small component.
Both systems, about 40. Mm-hmm. That's correct.
The lion's share of the contribution is made up of the second component, the accrued liability contribution, and that is an amortization of the unfunded accrued liability. You can think of it as a mortgage payment, similar to paying off your mortgage over a 30-year period. This unfunded liability needs to be paid off over a number of years. Present date, the amortization of the unfunded is scheduled to be paid off over 18 years. But unlike a mortgage, that balance actually changes year in, year out. Your mortgage doesn't change. You kind of know what the remaining balance is going to be every year. Based on market conditions, and market conditions not necessarily meeting the expectations, that unfunded balance can grow faster than anticipated, or it can shrink faster than anticipated. So, it's a moving target, and that's what's really driving some of the volatility in the contributions. So, a couple key assumptions. We assume that assets will return 7.25% on an annual basis. Previously, that rate was 8%, but the city brought it down, I think about five years ago, to 7.25%. We also use a mortality table that is dictated by the IRS. This is a, one of the more recent tables that was released by the Society of Actuaries, and the IRS adopted this up-to-date table in 2018. So, what I did here was give you a history of the unfunded actuarial accrued liability and what we expected it to be the following year, and what the loss was on that unfunded accrued liability. So, in 2014, we anticipated an unfunded accrued liability of $77.1 million. The actual unfunded accrued liability was $80.7 million for a loss of $3.6 million. And what you will see is every year we've had losses, every year the unfunded accrued liability has been higher than anticipated, and as a result, the actuarially determined contribution has increased in line with those increases in the unfunded actuarial accrued liability. 2015, we had a $1.4 million loss. 2016, the loss was close to $7 million. In 2018, the loss was $12.4 million, but the bulk of that was attributable to moving to the updated mortality table. Again, this updated mortality table is a recognition that all of us are expected to live longer than folks 20, 30 years ago.
Right.
In most respects, living longer is a really good thing for pension financials, not so much, unfortunately.
Do you know what accounted for the big loss in 2016?
Asset, asset performance.
Was probably.
Yeah, so, I guess the overarching theme of this presentation is that contributions go primarily as far as asset performance takes you. There's really two ways to fund the benefits that are due to participants. It's either through assets performing well or through contributions to the system. You know, typically, when I go speak to plan sponsors, the third lever is really through plan design, freezing benefits, curtailing benefits. That's already been done here for the most part. So, the two levers that are really at play are investment return and contributions from the city. Any thoughts or questions? So, this is just a history of the returns in the system over the past 12 years, and as you can see, it's been somewhat all over the board, but it's really tracked to how the broader market has done. It hasn't really deviated that much from the broader market. We had the crash in 2008, 2009, and then the markets rebounded shortly thereafter. But I would have you focus on the last four years of returns because that's what's really driving contributions today. And you can see that in '15 and '16, returns were pretty much flat, '17 positive, and when I say positive, that's in comparison to our 7.25% expectation. And then again, 2018, there was a loss. So, what I look at to quickly understand whether or not the assets have met our, the asset performance has met our expectation over the prior four-year period, is how the actuarial value of assets, that smooth value or average value, compares to the market value of assets. And when the actuarial, when the market value of assets is greater than the actuarial value of assets, the investment, investments have outperformed our expectations, meaning over that prior four-year period, investments have generally returned better than the 7.25% assumption. When the market value is less than the actuarial value, the investments have underperformed our expectations. And you can see for each of the past four years, we've had, we're in an underperformed situation or position. Any questions?
What was, how much, what was the order of magnitude in 2018? Are you going to cover that of the underperformance percentage-wise?
So, we have an actual return of 4.7%, and we assume year in, year out that the returns will be 7.25%.
So, a delta of 3%?
Exactly.
Excuse me.
Paul.
Why do they underperform?
I wish I had an answer for you, but, you know, assets, you know, depends on how our economy is doing, which investments are being selected, not only the class of investments, but the specific investment that's being selected in a particular class. And to a certain degree, you know, rising tide floats all boats. Like I said, the performance of the retirement system's assets haven't deviated significantly from the market, so the market over that period has, or underperformed your 7.25 expectation and has resulted in contributions increasing beyond what we would have anticipated.
Well, for the past four years, it's underperformed our 7.5% or 7.25%. At what point should we adjust that?
That's a good question. So, like I mentioned, we adjusted it from 8% to 7.25%. This, as are most actuarial assumptions, it really is a long-term, forward-looking assumption. So, what's happened in the past, while we can use that to inform what we anticipate in the future, should really, to a certain degree, kind of wipe that clean and look at what you anticipate going forward irrespective. Is 7.25% reasonable? So, I will tell you, my understanding is that 7.25% is somewhat in its sweet spot for governmental plans. It's not, it's not higher or much lower than what I've seen. Corporate plans have different expectations and different parameters applied, and in the corporate plan arena, 7.25% would be at the upper ends.
So, we're still positioned probably where we should be?
I think it's a reasonable assumption for a governmental plan. I don't think you are an outlier in any respect.
Okay.
Question. With the Fire and Police and the supplemental, are there some of the same?
Investments?
Yeah.
Yeah, same investments. That's why you see the, the returns have tracked so closely together.
Have they ever been separate?
Not according to the code, and that, the way the code reads, the funds are collectively, although they have shares that are assigned to each fund, they have pretty much been invested in alignment with each other.
Which makes sense because you get better.
That's what you're saying.
Or magnitude. Go back to the curve, as you would, please. It actually performed a little bit better than the market, but not as good as the expectation.
Yeah, the expectations are fairly aggressive in this environment.
And what you're looking for is 7.25% over the long haul.
Over the long term. This is a really.
Yeah, but we had four back-to-back bad years where we didn't make.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, these are really long-term expectations, and when I review this assumption with plan sponsors, one of the things I tell them is the expectation really shouldn't change year in, year out unless you are changing your allocation. Say you're 60% equity and 40% fixed income, and you're going to flip that and be 40% equity and 60% fixed income, then there would be an expectation that your returns would be lower, or if there's just a different outlook in the market in general.
And I think it's really important so we don't beat up on ourselves to know that, for example, I think if I remember correctly, the Russell Index was down at least five and a quarter. S&amp;P was about 5% down for 2018.
Mm-hmm.
And we're not down, we're up, but we're not meeting the expectation.
Right, and to your point, Mr. Mayor, I took a look at the benchmark for these investments collectively, and the city's performance is actually ahead of the benchmark over the past five years. I think you've returned somewhere in the neighborhood of, what, 4.7% over four years? I think it's about 4 and a half, 5% over that, over the past five years, and the benchmark was less than that. So, you've actually done pretty good, given the market. It's just compared to our expectations, it's paled.
Please, please.
When I look at, I'm just going to use the fire numbers because they're on the top. If I go 18, 17, 16, 15, 14, 13, five years, and I average 11.5, 14, .2, 1.6, 7.7, 4.7, that doesn't give me some number north of 7.25%?
I don't think so, but what I've looked at is.
Look at 2015. I mean, that's like getting a zero.
Yeah, and, yeah, in both.
It brings it right down.
16 and 15.
And 16. And 16.
Look at 16.
Take it off the chart.
And what I focused on is the past four years because it's those gains and losses over the past four years that goes into that actuarial value of assets that we use for contributions.
Just like getting a zero on a test that's really hard to bring up.
Take everything down. Bring your A down to a C.
Or D.
So, just to summarize, we assume 7.25%. The annualized return over the past four years has been about 3.9%. And if we had returned 7.25% over the past, over that period of time, the required, or the actuarially determined contribution would have been $6.8 million versus the current $9.4 million, all things being equal. So, the.
2.64 cents on the tax rate, just about.
Yeah, $777,000 a penny.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Everybody get that?
Yeah.
The delta.
Yeah, so, the, when I say poor in relation to what we anticipate, the poor performance has driven the contribution significantly higher, results in a market value that is over $25 million lower than what would have been the case if returns were met. And one thing to note is that while the actuarial value of assets dampens the effects of losses and gains if we were in a gain position over the short time, the market value really does win out because the actual value will converge to the market value eventually. This example, I think, highlights it, and I know there are a lot of numbers here, but I'd like you to focus on the final two columns, 2018 and 2019. Each of the rows shows the losses on the assets in the past four years. So, in the first row, 2014, the initial loss was $13.3 million. Now, this is just for the Fire and Police as an example. If you look at the 2018 column, it shows the amount that's unrecognized, and when you go down to total, it shows an amount of just under $7 million. So, those are the losses that have been deferred when we count, when we use the actuarial value of assets. So, what that really means is we're allowed to increase our market value of assets by those deferred amounts. And you look down at the final three rows, we're showing the market value of assets in the 2018 column, $163 million. Those deferred losses, we get to add back in and use them in the market value of assets. So, that's how it kind of smoothes out the volatility. So, instead of using $163 million in our calculation of the contribution requirements, we used $170 million in that calculation, thereby reducing what the contribution would have been otherwise if we used the market value of assets. And I highlight that just to say that while the losses are deferred, we're going to have to recognize them eventually. So, when you roll forward to 2019, you can see that that six point, or almost $7 million becomes $2.5 million. So, I've assumed for 2019 that our return expectation is met of 7.25% so that there is no loss in the 2018 column. And if there is no loss in the 2018 column, we have an unrecognized amount of $2.5 million. So, you're only adding back in $2.5 million to that actuarial value of asset calculation. Thereby, we know that the return on that actuarial value of assets is going to be lower than we anticipate, which will drive the contributions up for two, for the following So, again, in this example, as I mentioned, we assumed in that prior example that the return for the fiscal year ending 2019 was 7.25%. That was on the market value. Given that we have these losses that need to be recognized from prior years, the return on the actuarial value of assets that we're going to be using for contribution purposes is only 4.25%. So, again, the market value or the actuarial value converging to that lower market value of assets. So, we're estimating that based on that scenario of investments returning 7.25% that the contributions for the upcoming fiscal year will be $10 million, because across the systems.
Compared to what this year again?
$9.4 million. So, that's on the baseline expectation of 7.25% returns. Year-to-date, on an annualized basis, the assets have returned 2.5%. And if we were to play that out for the remainder of the year, we're looking at a contribution requirement of about $10.2 million, all other things remaining equal. But if we were to use the market value of assets, which we're not going to, but based on what the actual, what the assets actually are, the contributions would be $11 million. So, you are getting at least the short-term benefits of the smoothing of the losses.
So, of those three alternatives, are ADCs going to be 10 million?
We don't know.
You don't know.
These are just some scenarios that we've played out just to give you a flavor. So, I think the 10.2 is the more likely scenario. It'd be pretty tough at this point to expect that on an annualized basis, you'd return 7.25%.
Dr. Patton is looking at $800,000 worth of additional money for the ADC in your proposed budget, which equates to one penny on the tax rate.
Yes. That's exactly correct. And it was in 2017 that we shared with you that the new actuarials, you know, you were given, cities were given, governments were given kind of like a gray spirit, but it was going to hit us. And so, now we're at the 19, going into the 20, it has changed.
Can I?
And how often, the new actuarials in terms of we're living longer and all of that and the impact, how often does that change?
So, there's nothing written in stone. The Society of Actuaries, they produce a report, I'd say about every 10 years. They go through a study and update the tables, but there's nothing written in stone, and the IRS doesn't necessarily have to adopt those tables. The Society of Actuaries issued these tables in 2014. It was always an understanding or expectation that the IRS would adopt them. They did not do so until 2018.
That's right. Questions?
Yes. In the year of the losses, I mean, how do we ever, I mean, do we ever catch up to make that up anywhere?
Go up on the ADC?
Yes.
If we go up on, that's the only way.
Well, you, if, so, the idea is, so, we set an assumption again of 7.25%, knowing that you're, it's going to be hard or impossible that you're going to meet 7.25% every year. There's an expectation that there is an equal chance of the returns being less or higher than that expectation every year. So, in the years that you have losses, we would assume that there would be future years that you would have gains to offset those losses. We just haven't seen that lately.
Right.
And Portsmouth is not the only sponsor of pension plans that is in this situation. 2018 was a bad year for everyone.
It was, everybody.
Any other thoughts or questions? So, we recently conducted a study on potential increases to benefits for those who are already in receipt of benefits. We looked at a few, a few different scenarios. One was a 1% increase in the benefit that those members were already receiving. The other was $75 increase. The other was $75 increase in the benefits to all recipients. And lastly, a codified COLA. If you were to say, every year, we're going to give a increased link to CPI and just bake that in, what would that amount to? And we assume that the increases would be capped at 2 percent every year, irrespective of whether the actual CPI was higher than 2 percent. And we did this as of 2018. The top half is for fire and police, the bottom half is for supplemental systems. The first row of each shows the current unfunded actuarial accrued liability, as well as the unfunded amount under each of those scenarios with the associated contributions. For fire and police, the current contribution is $7.2 million. Under the scenario where we provide a 1 percent increase to all of the retirees and beneficiaries, it goes to $7.4 million. If you provide a $75 increase, the contribution requirement would have gone to $7.8 million. And the codified cost of living adjustment would bring you to $10.8 million. And those increases would not be one-time increases. You're really funding it over that amortization period, which is currently at 18 years. So, you'd be looking at that kind of delta, all things being equal, over an 18-year period.
On top of the ADC?
This is the ADC.
That is the ADC.
Yes, that is the resulting ADC. Current provision, $7.2 million for fire and police, and 7.4, 7.8, and 10.8 under the three different increase scenarios.
The 7.2 and the 2.1 on the bottom equal the 9.4?
Exactly.
Mayor, Mayor and Vice Mayor, Members of Council, that 10.75 does not include, on top of that, we have to pay the bond payment.
Payback?
Yeah. So, that would take us to, off the top of your head, what?
20. 11 million plus the 14 million is 25, so that'd be 25 million a year.
25 million a year.
And we currently are at where? About $18 million a year for the debt service and...
We're right about that.
So, that brings us to the end of my prepared remarks. Any additional thoughts or questions?
No questions.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council, Mrs. Gooden will come forward to share with you the other post-employment benefits in the City of Portsmouth.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council. My presentation tonight will provide an overview of the city's other post-employment benefits. Some of our other post-employment benefits include, in addition to our pension plans that we offer retirees, we provide them with a monthly retirement allowance, health insurance, health reimbursement accounts, and we also provide health insurance coverage to the spouses of post-65 retirees who have not yet retained on the age of 65. To speak a little bit about this, I think I was asked to provide a little bit of history. When you go back through the code as it relates to the retirement allowance, it correlates directly to the actual retirement age with Medicare for eligibility. Because you'll see there was a period of time where they only received $100 from the date of retirement until 62, and then in 1993, it increased to 200 from the date of retirement, excuse me, 1994, to $200 for age of 65. So, that's been going on since 1973 for both of our retirement allowances. Again, it provides about $200 a month, $2,400 annually. That fiscal year 2019, that 450 doesn't include the Portsmouth retirement system. That's about $120,000. As it relates to the number of participants, that was a question. With the fire and police, there's 193 participants, retirees that receive it. But I want to explain it this way. Keep in mind that when we look at that, some of our members are going to be subject to a QUADRO, a Qualified Domestic Relations Order. So, in some cases, that $200 is being split as it relates to whatever that domestic order actually states for that member. For the Portsmouth self...
Same cost to us, though.
Same cost to us. I was just clarifying.
Those out.
Same cost.
For the member.
So, what you're saying, that number could be lower?
No, we're not saying that we...
No, the number is accurate. I just explained to you in regards that with that, yes, the number could be lower. I explained to you that some of them...
To the person.
Correct.
But not to us.
Correct. So, you might have...
What was, I'm sorry, what was the number of people under that?
198.
Total?
Yes.
For both plans, it's 241.
Okay.
It's 193 for the fire and police retirement system, and it's 48 for the Portsmouth supplemental retirement system. Sorry, I didn't mean to confuse anyone. I just want to explain that in some regards, it's actually separated.
Yes, hold on, Mrs. Gooden, please. Mayor and Vice Mayor, Members of Council, as we have researched, looked at the code, look at the years, look at the ages, and I was here 22 years before I left, we attributed this arrangement to connect it somehow to the void that we had in Social Security. Now, no one is here in terms of staff that know that, but when we sit down and we look at those ages, and then at 65, and there were a period of time where there were a group of employees who, for whatever reasons, I guess through choice, I don't know, did not pay into Social Security. So, we just attributed this being something that tied in from whenever she said 19...
73.
70 till 94.
So, the number of retirees that we have of both plans that are not yet 65 is what number again?
I'm going to have to keep in mind with the numbers that I gave you, that 241, that's going to be, that could, in some regards, it could be being counted twice, for example. Because I could have $200. I could be retiring, not yet reached the age of 65. Maybe I have a QUADRO with my spouse, and I have to give him 50 percent or vice versa.
My question is, how many retirees do we have that have retired from either one of those plans that are not yet 65? They're no longer inactive employees, but they're in that...
I'd have to, I'd have to get that up.
Mr. Gooden, please.
I'd have to get that for you. I think what's also interesting to note with the retirement allowance, as you know, we do have some retirees because of the richness of our retirement plan, especially under fire and police. We do have some retirees who've retired under the fire and police retirement system. Of course, they have not attained the age of 65 yet. They've left us. Maybe they go work someplace else, and maybe subsequently, they come back. So, even if they come back and get rehired by us, they'll be covered under VRS. Of course, they're still going to get their pension, but they'll still get that $200 monthly allowance. And what's interesting to note, they'll still end up paying the employee active rates for health insurance.
I understand that richness is...
Is there a question?
I saw the mayor figure it.
We're waiting on you all.
Social Security, if you want to. Yeah. You said, I mean, but we can't do anything about people that didn't...
There's nothing you can do about it. I just think it's just a good thing, it's just something to note. It's interesting in that regard.
But that could be some of the concern with people feeling like they're not getting their appropriate disbursement or retirement.
No, this is, this is... It just shows you how rich, it just shows how rich the plan is. Really just shows some richness aspect of it.
Well, this is how it was set up, and this is how it was portrayed to the employees. This was going to be a benefit when you retired. And I said in a previous meeting, VRS retirement, there's what they call a hazardous duty supplement. And I believe it's up to $1,100 at this point in time. Back in those days, I believe the VRS hazardous duty supplement was $500. So, the bargaining between the city and these employees was, they were trying to get a hazardous duty supplement like the state had. The deal came up as $200, which was $300 less than what the state was offering to try to be commensurate in some type of benefits. So, as the VRS has progressed through the years, this system closed June 30th, 1995. So, that number never increased like the hazardous duty supplement did under VRS. But that was the history and where that number really came from. It really has nothing to do with Social Security. That is your benefits when you retire. That has nothing to do if you get employed after that. That was your benefit from applying, retiring under this plan as an employee of this city. So, that's where the 200 came from.
But you had the regular employees in it, too.
Right. But what happened was, that was, the argument was, they wanted a hazardous duty supplement, but the decision was at the time, not just to give it to one retirement, they gave it to both. So, that's how the supplemental got it, because of the fight from the public safety side. So, that was just, that's how it went.
Check my logic. The answer to my question is dividing 450,000 by 2,400 per year gives you the number of people.
Roughly.
That's 187 and 1/2.
Correct.
I didn't do that in my head.
I did.
Another thing I think we should look at, too, is we know that age 65, that drops off. So, there is an ending to that. It doesn't go forever. So, really, what you would have to do is look at a number of people under both of those retirement systems. How many of them turned 65 in 2019? How many turned 60 in 2020? And that much money will drop off every year until the youngest one reaches 65, and it'll be no more.
Have the actuaries looked at that from that perspective?
Mr. Stewart?
Mr. Stewart, I was looking.
Are you aware of this? I'm sure you are.
Yeah. So, this is a, this is a number that we maintain.
He mentioned that in his...
Yeah, the 450.
It would be interesting to see how, what is the age distribution of that curve? 187 people, is it front-end? Is it spread?
It's very...
It's spread.
He may have it.
Okay. I might have some.
Okay.
Yeah, there's some kind of bar chart that goes like this.
Yeah, right. It ain't going like that.
So, you won't be able to see this, but we've got a chart here that shows that there are, let's say, three people that are younger than 45. 53 who are between, this is, this is as of July 1, 2018. 53 who are between the ages of 45 and 49. 81 from 50 to 54. 66 from 55 to 59.
The vast majority of them are below 60, is what you're saying?
Yes, yes.
More than, it sounds like more than half are below 55.
Yes.
No, I think that was below 55. Of the, of those that are below 65?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. Of those that are below 65, the majority are below 55.
Yeah. And the long-term span, we're looking at 2080 and 90.
We also provide a health reimbursement account. It was provided to our post-65 retirees who are covered under the city's health insurance plan. That plan actually ended, it was eliminated for future retirees on June 30th, 2015. HRA is a way to assist them. They can actually use that $1,400 that they receive annually to pay for their health insurance premiums or other qualified medical expenses. Our current number as of today, it's about 285 retirees that currently receive that. In addition...
But most, aren't most 65 and older receiving Medicare?
They are receiving Medicare.
If they're not working full-time, they can choose.
If they're not working full...
They can still stay on the company's plan if they're full-time and they work full-time.
That is correct. Keep in mind also, as you know, that with those retirees who are Medicare eligible, once you get close to approaching 65, we talked to an employee the other day, they get bombarded with all the different insurance companies. So, they have all those different Medicare supplemental plans, you know, A through F. They might be up to J right now. And what they're trying to do is to provide some additional benefits that almost appear to be more like an employer-sponsored plan. Some of them will give you some prescription benefits, and you can decide your plan based upon what you want your plan benefits to be and how much you want to pay. So, it is a little bit of amount, but it's still not enough to give them everything that they need. The biggest thing that we found, when I worked here initially, when we had the retirees post-65, because they had Part A and Part B, most of them used our insurance plan, really more so for the prescription drug benefits, until G.W. Bush, President G.W. Bush, he introduced the Part D Medicare to be the drug subsidy.
Well, some history on the HRA.
Yes, sir.
When the city decided to move post-65 out of our health insurance and allow them to go on Medicare and get what I call Medigap insurance...
Mm-hmm.
Which is required.
As a way of reducing the fear of change. The city came up with the $1,400. And even just moving off of the city's plan on the Medicare and Medigap insurance cost the retiree less than what it was costing the retiree in the city plan.
Right, for my contributions.
So, the $1,400 was a way of, again, reducing the fear, because this is big change.
Absolutely.
And it also saved the city some money. Oh, yeah. It took $25 million off the OPEB liability and a SNAP.
Yeah, it does, it did reduce our OPEB. It did help us with that. But also, what we ended up doing is using $3 million to fund the OPEB when we established that OPEB trust. The other thing that I think is good to also note, with our health reimbursement account, we did have some, and this, I can only just tell you the history with this when I came back in November of 2015, but we encountered some spouses of some of the post-65 retirees that had not yet attained the age 65. And what we ended up doing was grandfathering them. So, they still are on the city's health insurance plan until they get, reach the age of being Medicare eligible. The city's contribution towards that, I believe, is probably, is probably about $90,000 a year annually for that.
And when this was instituted, it was instituted with the understanding that this was good for one year, although we would try to keep it in place going forward. There was no guarantee. That would be subject to annual appropriations by the city council. And as we look at, you know, when you think about the ADC cost to notice the equivalent of 1 penny on the tax rate, I think we have to give some consideration to maybe ramping this number down. Because the, again, the cost of Medicare plus Medigap insurance is still less than what the retiree would have been paying under the city's plan had they stayed.
That's right. For retiree health insurance, we still provide health insurance to our retirees under the age of 65. We have approximately 171 retirees that actually participate. We also allow them to stay on other plans. We also offer dental vision and legal care plan, and we also include their dependents. The medical plan and the Delta Dental PPO, those are both self-insured plans. So, again, those are going to be all city dollars. Other thing I think is good to know, if you look at the city contribution, the city contributes about 1.4 million. There's an annual claims cost of about $2.7 million. As it relates to our overall health insurance, we pretty much paid when we did our renewal for 2019. Our HMO plan that we have our retirees in is basically at a unit cost per retiree. It's $1,239 per retiree per month in total claims and expenses. And if you look at trends between your retirees and your actives, that is running about 55% higher than our active HMO employee plan, and is currently being driven. We've got about three large claimants who represent about 52% of that total claims cost of that $2.7 million.
Three. And people of them get sick.
And I think I just understated the reduction in the, in the OPEB. It was close, it was closer to 200 million. It was a big, big number that went away.
I had a question, if I could. I was going to ask a question, and I thought, if I retire from here and I'm in the fire and police system, and I'm in that 40 group, I can go and get another job, but I can stay in the city's health insurance.
Yes, you can.
So, I'm getting, I'm getting the retirement, I've got a new job making $107,000, plus I'm still in the city's health insurance.
You can't...
Up until...
Up until we reach 65. I will say this, though. One of the things we did prior to, I think it was when our mayor was our deputy city manager, we actually put in a clause. At one point in time, when I came to the city back in 1999, you're probably not going to believe this, but we allowed retirees to come on and off the plan at will. You could come on for a month or two, get a surgery, come off, call us back next year.
Adverse selection.
Yeah, we did it for a while, for quite some time, and then...
Well, it cost you a lot of money.
It did. And then what we did, I can't give you the exact year... And then what we did, I can't give you the exact year, but then we, council made a decision, city managers made a decision, and we basically contacted all the retirees that we knew that we had. We did a whole bunch of series of meetings. We told them, this is your one time to opt in. And so now what happens is this, if you are a retiree, so why some of our younger retirees stay on the plan? To have retiree health insurance is a huge benefit to have. Most companies are not doing that anymore. So a lot of our retirees.
Take a look at that number, 171. Remember, we just said there were 187. There are only 16 retirees that are not in our plan, if you, if our numbers are tracking.
I guess I do have a question. Why, why are we covering retirees, based on what you just described, that met their retiree status? They're young, they're under 65, and they're going perhaps to another employer?
They are.
And they're still covered under our plan? Why are we doing that? Is there, is there a code reason? Is there a legal reason? Why are we doing that?
I would have to tell you, I'm not even going to tell you, I don't think it's even a code reason. I think it's, I think it's a decision.
I don't know either, but the one thing I do know is, I can't remember if it was January 14 or January 15, the retirees' rates doubled. So, you know, people that had the opportunity to go somewhere else, I thought a lot of them went somewhere else because that rate doubled. So retiree is paying twice as much as active employee.
But apparently, they're not.
Well, they might not be going anywhere, but they're paying twice as much.
Yeah.
So I don't know how that changes the bottom line, because they're paying a lot more than an active employee.
But Shannon, I think the answer, that's, that's a very good question. I think it's policy, you know, it's.
Right, right. I guess it's policy.
How much more are they paying than an active?
Than an active employee, an average policy for our retirees, just for their portion, it's about $553, I think, somewhere around there. But keep this in mind, if you're an active employee, you might be paying about $90 a month. So it's a huge difference. So there is a cost, as you speak to it. When they did, kind of what they call that with Councilman Clark is speaking of, there was a period of time in the city of Portsmouth where we subsidized, the active subsidized the, the claims for the, for the actual retirees. So their rates were a little bit more, I'd say maybe more cost-effective to them. And I guess I'll go along with what Councilman Clark said, probably in 2014, what we did was, we actually did this at one period of time previously before, but you actually get each plan to actually be rated on its own. And when you rate each plan on its own, it's going to drive up your cost, because the less people you have on your plan to spread the risk. So it goes back to what I said about having three claimants that actually take up 52% of our actual claims cost. If we had more retirees, it does actually lower the cost in that regard. So that's where it comes. Now, that 171, to put it in perspective, about 148 are on the HMO, somewhere around, probably a little bit less than that. There might be about 13 or 20 people on the PPO plan. So keep that in mind. That's rated in and of itself, too. So that's going to drive up the cost.
Other question is, I don't know if this is right or not, but at one point, did they change it to where if an employee's spouse has insurance available through their employer, they can't be on the plan?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, we did that. That is true.
We did that in '16.
It's not a law. It's, it's a good practice, a lot of companies, like Minnesota policy you're doing, they're basically saying that if your spouse has insurance where he or she works, that they have to actually get the insurance there. Yes. That has helped us. When, it has helped us, too. It has helped the city. You can actually see, I don't have that slide here, but you can actually see when we instituted that, you can see some of the declaiming in enrollment and how much it actually saved us with money in that regards.
When we came on board in '15, and you came on in November, there was a time period, I don't know the year or whatever, that most governments or whatever, the federal government said something, that this was something in terms of, if your spouse, you know whatever you quote, or whatever the process is, if your spouse works over. Share what time frame that was, if we said, you said, we could have done that a long time ago. And we didn't. So when we came on board, she put it in place.
I'll, I'll say this. We could have done it some, some time ago. We did it in a previous locality where I was. We were a little bit maybe dogmatic about it, as far as making sure that she did that. There's a lot of different things that you can do to offset, you know, your cost of your health insurance. I mean, there's everything from, you have to be careful, the EOC's come out recently, the last year or two, to be careful about employers and what type of wellness incentives they do to help offset the cost. But there's a lot of different things that they're actually doing. That has worked out well for us. And in some regards, it also works out well for the retiree, because of, I mean, excuse me, for the active employee, because they'll save them a little bit in their claims cost. Proceed for me to go on? Well, that actually concludes my presentation for this evening. And I'll take any questions, if there are any additional ones.
Now, we go to VRS multiplier?
Yes, is that, I'm sorry, I forgot about that. Oh, thank you. VRS multiplier, there was a request to, look, this chart here pretty much represents the VRS retirement multiplier based upon our regional or sister cities. What you can actually see, you have your hazardous duty multiplier for your sworn employees. That's pretty much what, what Councilman Clark was talking to us about. As you can see, Hampton and the city of Portsmouth, we're the only ones, as far as a hazardous duty multiplier for retirement, that we still sit at 1.70. Plan 1 multiplier, that is pretty much the original, that's the defined benefit plan under VRS, as most of us know it, where it's truly, as you tell people, anytime you can do a defined benefit plan, your employer is going to pay most of the costs. Up until recently, you know, a couple of years ago, the General Assembly grandfathered people on it, told employers, everybody had on a particular date, the city would pay those contributions. They also came up with a Plan 2 multiplier. It's basically just a, it's a not as rich benefit as our Plan 1. And the most recent one that they've came out in recent years is your hybrid multiplier, which is a defined contribution plan. The key thing is really down here at the end. There was a request for us to look into how much it would cost us to increase our multiplier by 1.85. The estimated increase, based on our total payroll, as of June 30th of 2017, is $678,447. Now, that was the amount when the actuary actually did it. He looked at our enrollment at that point in time. That amount could increase or decrease depending upon enrollment and what we have. So that's what we have out there. I think that was a request from Councilman Moody, I believe.
Yeah. The Hampton, they're in the process of changing theirs to 1.85 right now.
Okay.
So that would leave us as the only one out of this list that's not there. And I've heard some information from the state VRS, that I guess the way the finances is and everything with the state, they're saying it would be optimal time to do it. And I think they, because you can pay it over a long period of time, isn't that correct?
You are going to pay it over a longer period of time. I think some of it is, you know, I'll leave the financial, you know, looking future out there, but I think a lot of people are trying to do it. Not quite sure where the economy's going to actually turn. And, and it would probably cost us more depending upon what happens with any type of investments or anything. Yes, ma'am?
Well, I mean, that can be phased in as well. So however, we need to do it, whether it's a phase-in period of three, four years, we need to set a goal of being at the 1.85, I feel, when we're talking about our hazardous duty employees.
Another thing, you know, I would like to see us go straight to the 1.85 and not phase it for a couple of reasons. You know, that's also a benefit that we keep people here as we continue to lose police officers to other jurisdictions. Some of these things are the reasons that they're going, because that multiplier makes a, a big difference over that career.
That's a good point. Did you say that you can amortize the cost over a period of time with VRS?
I believe that may be one of the options that we could do.
Can you check it out?
Yes, sir, I will.
Yes, we'll look into it.
I'll, I'll say this, too. Even though we have had some public safety employees actually leave the city, I will also tell you, we've had a great many also come back. I will say this, something about the culture, I can tell you, we had a period of time where we had some firefighters leave and go to Suffolk, and they were gone maybe a month or two, and they said they missed the camaraderie. We've also, we've also been successful in attracting others. We always teach Chief Hoffman and tell him, you probably shouldn't go to Chesapeake. We got quite a few of their firefighters that have come over. So we've been pretty good in that with the recruitment efforts.
All right. So you're going to, you're going to.
Yes.
Find out from VRS?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, then we can amortize the cost over a period of time.
Thank you, ma'am.
That concludes the presentations, Mayor. We have the city manager's report.
All right.
Okay. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, there are five items on the city manager's report tonight. The first is the 2018-2019 Virginia OPR Treatment Award. An award of $171,200 has been brought forth through the Virginia Department of Behavioral Healthcare and Developmental Services. And we're looking to appropriate the funds in the FY 2019 Behavioral Healthcare Service Fund to provide treatment and recovery services for Portsmouth residents. The second is an appropriation for funds for Waste Management Building Project, an adoption of an ordinance appropriating $600,000 from the Waste Management Fund, unassigned fund balance, and transferring the said $600,000 to the Waste Management Building Construction Project in the FY 2019 Capital Improvement Fund for the construction of a new Waste Management Building. The third is an adoption of an ordinance to transfer, reappropriate, transfer and reappropriate the sum of $400,000 from the Hazmat Program Project in the FY 2019 Capital Improvement Fund Budget to the renovation of various building projects in the FY 2019 Capital Improvement Fund Budget for the purpose of relocating certain Portsmouth Police Department The next is creating a Census 2020 Complete Count Committee. Adoption of a resolution creating a Census 2020 Complete Count Committee for the purpose of increasing community awareness of the participation in the FY 2020 Census. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council, item number 19-101, New School Site. Given the questions raised at last night's joint city council school board meeting as it related to a new middle school site, I'm recommending this item be removed from the agenda pending further discussion with Portsmouth Public School Board and Superintendent Eli Bracy. And I did speak with Superintendent Bracy today, and he concurred.
I think that's a good idea. There were definitely some questions about the site. All right, we have two public hearings tonight, both on the same development. So we'll take them one at a time, a public hearing each. I'll ask the clerk to read the caption. Then I will state the protocol, that the applicant has 10 minutes to make a presentation at the council. Once that's done, I'll call on the city manager, so that you can ask Mr. Baldwin to come up. Once that's done, we'll open the public hearing. We'll do that twice. Okay, that's our procedure. And Debra?
The applicant has expressed to Mr. Baldwin that because these two items are related, they're just going to cover both items when they make their statement.
Great.
Even though the public hearings have to be separate, they're going to make one statement.
I have one more item. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, you have received your CAPRA for 2018, which is Conference of Annual Financial Report. On page 17, there was a typo. And we have the page here that can be inserted. If you want to return your books and we insert it, we can, you can, or we will give you the sheet. We talked about printing all, just, and we said that wouldn't be feasible, so we have the sheets. And the clerk will get them to you and all of the.
They've got the holes in them already?
Ma'am?
They've got the holes in them?
Yes, they do.
I'll just give you my book.
All right. I'll take your book. We'll get it in there. Okay, we can do yours tonight. Get your son tonight. Okay, that ends my.
Any questions on the agenda? No special presentations tonight. Brings us to city council liaison reports, we'll start on my left.
I gave military an EDA at the last meeting, and I sent you all my EDIC earlier today.
Okay.
I don't have any.
Paul, any report?
Elizabeth covered the EDA last time and EDIC via email today.
And we met with the schools and PRHA, so everyone knows what's going on. They have extended another agreement out to the Wuda Group. So Thursday at 2:00 is the deadline, so we will know then if they've made application.
All right, the Hampton Roads Regional Jail Authority, just some of the updates. They currently, at that meeting, only had two vacancies, so they're able to fill the staff. They still have several officers in the basic academy. One of the medical reports was, we have three residents on dialysis. We have 53 residents that have HIV. In the month of January, they spent $106,000 just on their medication. There's 14 pregnant females. Three of them are on opiate maintenance. One of them has twins. There was, some of the staff was awarded a life-saving award. They had an individual that was hypoglycemic and then went cardiac arrest. They were able to perform CPR until one of our medic units arrived. She was transported to hospital where she recovered and is back at the facility now. During that timeframe, there was 1,975 transportation trips. There was 5,173 seen by medical. So they provided 200,000 meals for the staff. And then basically, they were, and we talked about everything, it's going well at the regional jail.
Yes.
And they discussed the fact that, you know, a lot of people are still talking about the Department of Justice report, but the last time, the report came out in December of 18, but the last time they were in the jail to inspect where that report came from was September of 2017. So it's been a year and a half since they've been in the building. So they are working with them to make sure everything is satisfactory for everybody. The numbers today, the Hampton Roads Regional Jail, we have 126 empty beds out of our 250 we're paying for. I think that the total number of inmates in the city jail today was 198. So if those beds were filled, that leaves 72 residents in our city jail. And that's all the update for this. Thank you.
Shannon?
Real quick, retirement board meeting is this Thursday morning at 8:30. TCC met with Dr. Woodhouse and Mayor Rowe and Mr. Cantrell, our newest board member to Tidewater Community College, and just had an introductory meeting. I think things went well, and Mr. Cantrell's looking forward to being a member of the board, and we're all looking forward to working together with TCC to produce some positive results going forward. So that's all I have.
Thank you. It's the actuary, Mr. Stewart, going to be on the agenda for the retirement board?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. No, he does appear periodically, but he is not planning on being here for this Thursday. I think we, our last report was last month, or the quarterly report was last month, but it's probably been, I want to say it's been four or five months since Mr. Stewart spoke to the retirement board, but he comes periodically.
All right. Any other items?
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Bennett, it might be good for a future litigants of council to explain, and this is really for the public's benefit, what lies ahead in the negotiations and evaluations for the unsolicited proposal that we received to move City Hall and the Public Safety Building. I don't think a lot of people paid attention to what was going on, and that's not meant to be a criticism. You announced on May 22nd of last year that you had received an unsolicited proposal. You indicated that you would put the ad in the local newspaper, which is the Virginia Pilot. The process was to allow other people to submit a proposal, so that in effect is a bid. There was a bidding process that's built into the state code. And we received no proposals during that process, right? And so then the question was, is the proposal that we got something that we want to pursue? And that's when we asked you in November to evaluate that proposal.
Yes.
And you came back and said, we think it's worthy of negotiating a development agreement, which then we'll put all the details in it, we'll describe what, who does what, and where, and when, and the size, and the location, and the price. All that lies ahead. I think it would be beneficial for the public to hear that in the work session. I think it would be beneficial for the public to hear that in a work session. What do you all think?
Yes.
Agreed.
Okay.[1774.73]